After a turn to open the public session, motion is pronounced Marcus. Second by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor? Thank you. And I'm sure we have Mrs. Free watching from home. So Jean, may I at least point the count? At least one person watching?
At least one person.
No, surely. Thank you. All right, evening. If I ask everybody at the conclusion of the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand, stay standing for a moment of silence for Pappas Scotty. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody, if you could stay standing. I'm just gonna say a few things about, I'll say grandma as it all refers as. She was embodiment of the middle school. She was somebody who made everybody feel loved. She has a smile to everybody and anybody. She didn't care who you were or what you were. She made sure that you felt included, that you were a member of the school district. And in the words of Elvis Presley, I say return to sender. We hope that God has accepted her and loves her, and she will forever be somebody who will be watching over the Elwood community. And we send our heartfelt prayers and condolences out to the Herman and Pappas Scotty family. She has two granddaughters who work in the district and a daughter-in-law. So at one point, there was three generations of that family working in Elwood. And the great family and family was she grandma to them and to their children. She was grandma to all of us. So keep with your prayers and your family's love. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings for December 6, 2018? Motion by Mrs. Weiss. Second by Mrs. Maloito. Questions or comments? All in favor? Foro. And we had another previous meeting that we need to approve, the meeting of January 10, 2019. Do I have a motion? Motion by Miss Maloito. Second by Mrs. Weiss. Questions or comments? See none? All in favor? Foro. Thank you. We will move to the portion of accommodations. Dr. Bosser?
Thank you, Mr. Samio. It gives us great pleasure to take this portion of the agenda to recognize some outstanding contributions that have been made to the Elwood School District. It gives us pleasure to recognize some of these extraordinary efforts, and also gives us pleasure to see so many people in the room when we arrive. So we appreciate that as well. To help us get started with recognition, I'd like to call upon our Harley Avenue Principal, Mrs. Moore.
Good evening, Board of Education and Elwood community. It is my pleasure to recognize a group of staff members and an individual teacher from Harley Avenue for their hard work and dedication. First, I would like to call Mrs. Kreutz, Mrs. Harris, Mr. Alessia, and Mr. Hack to join me.
We're gonna watch a video first.
So we began this school year with the idea of creating a sensory path based upon a Facebook post that Mrs. Kreutz found. Our passion and excitement about this idea to support the students at Harley Avenue snowballed into a wonderful superhero-themed sensory path created and made by us. It is a brief activity that uses gross motor skills to help students focus. In order to surpass our goal of having it done by Thanksgiving, Mrs. Kreutz assembled the team, including our art teacher, Mrs. Harris, and our wonderful custodians, Mr. Jose and Mr. Chris. They all worked really hard to paint, create, and accomplish Sensory City. Once Sensory City was completed, we realized that although Harley Avenue is an amazing place, the aesthetics of the inside of the building did not reflect the teaching, learning, excitement, creativity, and love happening in the building. So the same team that created Sensory City was tasked with a year-long task to makeover Harley Avenue. We painted the hallways, came up with themes, created street signs, street names, involved the staff in choosing colors, et cetera. Well, our year-long project actually took a few short months. I am so proud of this team, their dedication and focus to bring our dreams of an extreme makeover school addition to reality. So thank you, Michelle, Ally, Jose, and Chris. Your hard work is most appreciated. I can't wait to see what other projects we can accomplish as we continue transforming our school. Thank you.
If I could just add before we end off the certificates and take some pictures. This was all done very much on some personal time, after-school hours, within the existing school budget. There were no additional funds expended to make this extreme change to the physical appearance of Harley. Mrs. Malone, I know a lot of this was your vision as well, so we commend you for helping to conduct the orchestra. And it really is just an amazing transformation walking the hallways from just last year, where Harley was a wonderful inviting place, to this year where it's a place where you just want to stop and look around a little bit. So it's been wonderful. We thank you for your efforts, and it's a great pleasure to join the Board of Education in recognizing your work tonight. So we have certificates for you. This is website worthy?
Mrs. Shomes, can you please join me? Mrs. Shomes is always willing to join a committee, help a colleague, learn techniques to advance her already incredible professional practice. She enjoys teaching and learning. Mrs. Shomes puts such enthusiasm into everything she does. All of her students and colleagues benefit so much from her energy. I know that I have gained so much from the positive energy, spirit, and ideas that Amy brings to the table. She truly loves Harley Avenue, and she is Elwood. She is the behind-the-scenes, the Clark Kent, the offensive coordinator of so many of the wonderful things that happen at Harley Avenue on a day-to-day basis. From the inception of the Night of the Month program, to bringing the cast and performances of John Glenn and Elwood Middle School to Harley, to our second-year program and enrichment clubs, and so many more. She oftentimes is my sounding board for my crazy ideas and is never afraid to come talk to me, challenge me, or offer advice. I am proud to call Mrs. Shomes a friend, a colleague, and family. Thank you for continuing to give your all to our wonderful Harley Avenue. Thank you, Lady Shomes of the Harley Table, for all you do. I can't wait to continue our work together.
You know, Amy, I would just add that, you know, when we go by our mantra of respect, responsibility, and relationships, I can't think of anyone on the faculty that embodies the Harley night better than you do. And that's not all. When we really examine our organization, there are some people who get to really be sometimes in the spotlight while others work behind the scenes to really make the engine go. And there are so many members of our team that sometimes make such grand contributions to our organization, and we don't have enough opportunities to recognize those. So tonight, we'd like to take one of those opportunities that we do have to really recognize one of the MVPs of the organization. And to assist us in doing that, I would like to call upon Mrs. Worfson.
Dr. Bosser pretty much told the essence of what I was gonna say about you.
Sorry.
I'm gonna have to come up with something new. What I'd like to say is that I think everyone knows that my-
Use the microphone. Please stay here, chalk here, ear you at home. Thank you.
Stand over here, because I don't want to get your finger back. And I'm gonna make Mrs. Buckley come up and stand next to me. Come on, Patty.
Gotta be in the camera view.
Elwood is known for having wonderful special education programs, and this, you know, supersedes me being in the spot as the director. And it has to do with so many factors. Of course, the Board of Education, the community that has always supported education, our parents who are really fantastic partners to support the efforts of our staff, our awesome special education students, and the staff that work in the building directly with the kids on a day-to-day basis. However, there are people that we don't often think about, and those are the people behind the scenes, very behind the scenes, in the special education office. Patty is the most senior person in our office. I'm in the shits area. And she is responsible for preschool special education. And when you think about preschool special education, it really doesn't come to a lot of people's minds because not many people are thinking about that process, and we're all focused on kindergarten. But she is perfectly suited for this position, and there's so many people in the room that know her, because it's not hard to imagine how a parent might be feeling when they suspect their kid has a disability, right? And some of those suspicions creep in as early as two, two-and-a-half, three. Maybe it was a pediatrician, a preschool teacher, maybe a family member, or maybe even something inside themselves. But when they come in to start that process, they're filled with a lot of fear and anxiety. And Patty is ideally suited because she is warm and caring and compassionate. Her skills in terms of administrative responsibilities are excellent. But what really sets her apart from so many other people is her big, kind, generous heart. She, and Dr. Bosser has witnessed this firsthand, she forms relationships with our families very quickly. She responds to emails at night, on the weekends. She is there for the parents from the very beginning of the special education process. So she'll transition some families through early intervention into preschool special education, and then to school age, and then walks them through that process. And we'll say that even includes being at Harley Avenue the first week of school to welcome our incoming kindergarten students. And I think Mrs. Malone would support the fact that she's an asset to have on staff. And when the parents see her there, they are so happy to see that friendly face that they've known for past few years. So I'm so grateful to Dr. Bosser for really suggesting this to me, because Patty is really so deserving. So when we talk about it all starts at kindergarten, right, in Elwood River North, really, for some of our students, it goes all the way back to preschool. So thank you, Patty.
I look tall in this photo.
At least he said tall, not skinny, right?
Our tape's lasting a little too long, I think.
All right, that was our portion for combinations, everybody. Thank you so much for your service, whether it be in the halls, in the classroom, or behind the scenes. We truly appreciate it from the Board. Thank you so much. So our next portion of the agenda, our school meeting is on report as Amy Sung.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be back on behalf of the Elwood student body to report the recent closing of our school schedule. It feels like the month has flown by. Nevertheless, from Harley to John Glenn, exciting things have been going on around the district. So let's jump right in. At Harley, the kindergarteners got into the holiday spirit by constructing and decorating gingerbread houses with a loved one. I remember having so much fun creating a gingerbread house with my dad in kindergarten, and it's inevitable that the kindergarteners created lasting memories as well. Throughout the month of December, the students in Mrs. Shomes' class and Mrs. Miller's class further fostered a kind environment with the help of a traveling muse named Fred. The secretaries enhanced their kindness by writing thank you cards, volunteering for a good cause, and creating a kindness book. Not surprisingly, our Boyd students spread holiday joy by adopting two families in the surrounding community and gathered funds to purchase presents for each member of the family. To top it all off, they wrapped each present. In addition to the families, the Boyd students have spread joy to children in the hospital. The students wrote letters of encouragement and gifted patients with coloring materials such as books. Speaking of generosity, the Boyd Student Council has fundraised to aid a 2011 John Glenn alum, Joe Rizzuto, on his medical mission trips to rural Nepal. Last Thursday, the middle school hosted the Elwood Steam Act, which provided an outlet for creative innovation and stimulating discussion. The ages ranged from kindergarteners attending the event to high school seniors leading some game stations. It was an excellent afternoon for all. Up at the high school, a busy second quarter comes to an end on the 25th. This week is midterm day. The scheduling process is underway, and councils have begun to meet with students and friends to discuss course selection for next year. The December No-1 night, Mr. Bushy has knighted our wonderful health and physical education teacher, Ms. Ott, at the January 8th meeting. Thanks to Ms. Walcott, our high school librarian, you can come visit the new night snook, which includes a chair that is so comfortable, you never want to get up. Congratulations are in order to Coach Pilaker and the kickline team for a dazzling performance at the competition at the Nassau Community College. The team received third place for their kick performance and fourth place for their prom performance. Another faculty member who deserves recognition this month is Nicole Correa, who was awarded the Asset Bright Light Award for her innovative use of technology in the classroom. She will be honored at the Bright Lights luncheon on January 11th from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Timberpoint Country Club. On January 10th, Glenn held the class of 2019 Mr. Glenn Competition. The 11 senior boys nominated for the male beauty pageant poured their time, energy, and talent into creating an exceptional show. At the end of the night of laughter and joy, Russell Rohan crowned Mr. Glenn. The senior class also put their volleyball skills to test in an exciting volleyball tournament before winter break. Speaking of friendly competition, the social studies department received first place for the outstanding door decoration. This Monday, the music department returned from their trip in Orlando, Florida, where each group had an enriching opportunity to perform with a professional. The chorus and orchestra created music for a Disney movie, and the results were jaw-dropping. The John Glenn marching band had an outstanding performance, as always, in Disney's Magic Kingdom. We always have some impressive students to recognize. Elizabeth Choi and Melissa Mandell, two dedicated John Glenn High School music students, were selected to attend the 2019 All Eastern Music Festival in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania during the first week of April. Elizabeth never fails to amaze us with her amazing violin skills, and Melissa Mandell's voice will be sure to enhance the mixed chorus. Kyle Zafoli was selected to the All New York State Football Team, and Adam Astarita was selected to the All New York State Soccer Team. Joshua Fener has achieved over 1,000 career points this winter and continues to chase the school record. Olivia Kelly broke three school records last week, including the 55-meter hurdle, the three-person hurdle relay, and the four-person hurdle relay. Freshman Sophia Condrin broke the school record for 1,500 with a time of 4 minutes and 41 seconds. Additionally, our amazing eighth grader Emily Lameira set a new school record in the 3,000. The girls' varsity track team also placed an impressive third at this past Sunday's league meeting. Just this afternoon, our star basketball player, Alyssa Demities, broke the school record for points, and she's currently holding a career record of 1,494 points. Looking to the future, the senior class will be hosting their senior fashion show on February 6th, and everyone is encouraged to come and see our yearly Elwood Stock Concert on February 1st. Thank you so much for your time and attention. Have an excellent night.
Andy, thank you so much. Given it's midterm week, you can run out as fast as you can. Dr. Bosser, up to your report, please.
Don't get upset here for me. Thank you, Miss Sung. I have two topics to discuss this evening, and I'll try to be brief. I was fortunate enough to make a recent trip up to Albany at the end of last week, working with the Commissioner and the Advisory Council from the New York State Council of School Superintendents. And that visit provided me with some insight as to some of the decisions that have been, or some of the recommendations that have been made since that time. The Senate, the Assembly, the Governor are very busy on work involving what will impact education moving forward, and they have taken some actions that will have a big effect on our day-to-day. I'm sure that if you are a Newsday reader, you are aware that the Senate voted 60 to 0, which is rarely uncommon, to take some action to repeal the legislation surrounding Mixed feelings on that issue, because the State Education Department had formed a task force to examine APPR and examine the state deception process to make targeted recommendations to the legislature of their recommendations for what they felt would be the best solution for correcting what has been a problematic issue. The groups had just begun to work in September and were charged with a year-long investigation. The Board is aware that Dr. Tuskun was selected from a statewide pool of administrators to be one of 30 to work on the committee in Albany. While the legislature took action to repeal the law before the committees had a chance to complete their work or make their targeted recommendations. So while we do feel there was necessary changes required to legislation, it's a bit of a question as to why that action was taken before the recommendations of the educators involved in the process. So my response is we'll have to wait and see. We are certainly moving in the right direction by recognizing that the laws that were in place needed to be changed, but what those changes are for me is still remains a question. So that is a wait and see. Another issue is clearly financial in nature. The Governor's proposal of the proposed state aid across the state was reported by Newsday to be a 3.6% increase to aid to their state schools. That sounds great, but it's not exactly accurate. When one computes the amount of money coming into the district, you have to consider all sources that we receive from the state. So while for Elwood specifically, the amount of foundation aid we received may have increased, the amount of building aid we received drastically decreased. So when you look at the overall aid proposed by the Governor to the Elwood School District, we would receive an increase of 0.25%, which is very different than 3.6%, and a total dollar figure of $34,000. So if the Board would like to entertain how you'd like to spend that, please let me know. But we know that our elected officials will begin their advocacy efforts to see perhaps some additional aid to Elwood. The challenge, however, when the base is 0.25%, even if the legislature is able to quadruple the aid heading in our direction, that's still a 1% increase. So we're starting in a difficult position, and Ms. Dunk will take us through the process tonight, but it is certainly far from a complete picture of what our financial aspect will look like moving forward. Another big factor in determining the financial future for the 19, 20 school year is what the tax cap will kind of relate to be, and what the Board chooses to propose to the community. We did receive some good news that because of CPI, Super Price Index, the tax cap begins at the maximum allowable level of 2%. And then when we begin to calculate our exemptions, Ms. Dunk will be able to prepare for the Board shortly what our cap is. It will be above 2%, but not significantly above 2%. Last year, we were at 4.5%, and the Board had to adopt the number that they felt the community was comfortable with and supported, which they did. We will not have any such flexibility this year. Our number will be much closer to 2%. So we may have some challenges and some difficult decisions moving forward. But Ms. Dunk will begin that process and presenting how we make those decisions moving forward. One of the other topics that was discussed at length with Commissioner in Albany was a growing problem of teacher shortages across the state. And the substitute teacher shortage is the one that we are feeling most profoundly. So I've been asked for insight, and it's pretty much the same. There are fewer people going into educational positions, so there are fewer individuals looking to act as substitute as a gateway to those positions. So we in our school district and really across the region are having a terrible time finding quality substitute teachers. And recently, the state made it more restrictive of who could substitute and for how lengthy period of time they could substitute in our classrooms without certification. Last year, state ed was granting waivers to qualified individuals to be able to substitute more than the minimum 40 days. This year, no such waiver applied. And when questioned why, the commissioner was very candid. Some urban districts were allowing individuals to settle in classrooms for days greater than 40 without high school details. So I kind of understand the state's response, but the restrictions that they put in have really handcuffed districts that have a much higher level of scrutiny for substitutes. We don't employ any substitutes that don't have a visa to change the grade. So that when we ask for a qualified individual to stay in a position for greater than 40 days for a position they are not certified for, we're doing it with the confidence that they are qualified to be in there. They are a person that is bringing appropriate levels of instruction to our students. And so the state restricting us from doing that has been a challenge. And we have been limited in the professional development opportunities, the great level of department-level opportunities that we can provide, because we just don't have a number of quality substitutes. We have a very small number of vacant positions in our district right now, but one of them is currently vacant. We don't have candidates applying for that position and qualified people that were comfortable working regularly with our students. I guess it was relieving to find out this is a statewide challenge, but it's been arranged. So it's something we'll continue to work on in the coming months. Other news from Albany is mixed. We will learn a great deal at the Home Legislative Breakfast scheduled for a week from Saturday. Many members of our board and school community are scheduled to attend. We'll be able to pose some questions to our elected officials. That is a very different group than in the past. It is a mixed group. It is a group that is represented by newly-elected senators and senate persons. So it'll be very interesting to hear their take on the educational issues that will be discussed with them. So I look forward to joining the board. Any questions? It was busy, and it's another one. The other update that I'd like to present tonight is an update from our Facilities Committee. As the community is aware, our board has committees that do subcommittee work that reports back to the Board of Education. One of the more active committees recently has been our Facilities Committee, co-chair of our Mr. Tamiya and Mrs. Weiss. The administrative liaison to that committee is Mr. McDonald. The primary focus of that work over the last period of time has been preparing for our capital bond and now supervising the work associated with our capital bond. So to make himself available to the board tonight and give the community an update, I asked Mr. McDonald to join us to provide the board with a report as to the work under the jurisdiction of the Facilities Committee. Mr. McDonald, please use your microphone, or Mrs. Freed will not give you the option.
Good evening, the board. Good evening to the Board of Education. And for the Facilities Committee update, as Dr. Bosser has just mentioned, the primary focus of Facilities Committee's upcoming tour just recently has been putting together a bond, which we successfully passed last year. And now we're in the process of doing that work. First phase of that work is the roofs for our buildings, because they're nearly here. The work that we proposed to the state got approved. We asked them to expedite the approval process so as that we could possibly get some work done this past summer. They did that for us at the cost of about $26,000. And we were able to get two roofs started in the late summer. Those were this building, the middle school, and Harleth. With that in mind, we had intended that, hopefully with good weather, we kept Harley done by the end of September and this building done by the end of October. That didn't happen. Harley is, I would say, 100% complete now, even with some additional items that we had to have done due to conditions that arose during the construction phase. This building, the roofing materials all done, the edge cappings all done. And the contractor is now in the process of having his work reviewed by John Mansfield, the manufacturer of the roofing system. In fact, I should be up there on the roof with them tomorrow to see how they're getting out here. The other things that we have to take care of, like several units here. But we will get those taken care of. So that's where we're pretty much at with Harley and the middle school. The second phase of Phase 1 would be Boyd and the high school. We put those jobs out for bid at the end of November. We evaluated, or actually BBS, our architect evaluated the results of the bid. Two are very well-known and experienced roofing contractors came in. A little better for Harley, for the high school, and for Boyd. And tonight, I look forward to the information that hopefully will result in you awarding contracts to two firms. And once that's done, they will be in an excellent position to get materials they need, a work that will begin right after the last phase. And these are very aggressive roofers. They may try and get some work done before school. But it's all going to depend on what's going to work for our schedule and what we've got going on in the buildings. That brings us to Phase 2 work, which we're hoping to get scheduled this coming summer, as you are. We're in just about at the point of submitting the paperwork and documentation to the SED. One small, I won't call it a glitch, but it certainly is something that's extending the time of preparation for that submission is the fact that both the high school and the middle school, having obtained 50 years or plus, are now down come under the perusal of the New York State Historical Preservation Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. So BBS is working diligently to get them the required paperwork they need to review type of work we intend to do this summer and hopefully meet their requirements so that we commence mid-that work to SED and hopefully get a third-party review, which would be expedited, and get us in a position to bid the war late spring, I would say, with the intent of having the contract start at the end of school. So that's where, that Phase 3, they're actually having us put together kind of like a committee of those groups in our school community who will be impacted by that work. And as we're talking about the storeroom renovation, home economics rooms, science room, cafeterias. Those particular items may be of a little bit more importance to the historic preservation. I'm hoping not too much, but we'll have to see how that plays out as we go on. The important thing is they're starting the basic work that needs to be done in order to get to the design phase, which is getting in touch with stakeholders involved in those locations within the buildings and have a conversation about what they plan to do. And that will be beginning in February. So there's a lot of busy stuff going on with this whole bond. Moving on, I think in a fairly long fashion. The other item that the Facilities Committee was involved with was the annual forms contract, which we avoided the contract to Johnson Controls. They've done all the preliminary work that's needed for submission up to SED for approval. That was done at the end of October, and the process for review and approval is about a year. However, just recently, they have offered a third-party expedited review process for energy and forms contracts. And I've asked BBS to look into that and see if it's a possibility for us. They are in the process of having a conversation with Johnson Controls. The point that Johnson Controls has to evaluate is the cost for doing this expedited review. The first cost they would have would be to get an outside review process of their actual calculations for saving and have that confirmed and approved. Then they can take their whole package, submit it to a third-party review with the SED. The cost of that is probably about $35,000 to $40,000, which they would have to absorb. They may be willing to absorb that if they can start, get a, of course, expeditious approval, which would allow them to start work this summer. That would reduce the amount of escalation cost that they would incur if the work were to begin after next October. So I think I've got to do a little balancing act and see if it works. We're in the process of doing that now. Hopefully, they will come back with some positive information on that. I will update you when I get that. But that's where we're at with that right now.
If I may just add to Mr. McDonald's report before he asks for any questions. I think an important point to make to the board and the community present regarding roofing work. We withhold payment until the project is perfect to our assessment. You remember that we have appointed a construction manager who is overseeing the project and at this point standing behind the roofing company with a ribbon chair. Actually wanted them to come in today during the rainstorm to take some corrective action. It became tomorrow. But we will make sure the job is done and done perfectly before final payment is made. And it's a sizable amount of money that is owed to the company, so they have every incentive to want to finish the job. But just so the board and community is aware, is we decide when the job is complete, not the contractor. So Mr. McDonald is making a careful watch on that. And Ms. Dunk is not signing a fine on any payments until we get the perfect score. And today was a good test to see where leaks may still exist, and we found them. So we will be withholding payment until we have perfectly completed projects.
And just to reiterate, we're all on the same page with that. Any questions?
Can you just expand upon the historical preservation aspect? Is it just going to hold everything up? Do they actually care what renovations we do? Is it a payment process? Like, what is the process there?
Well, our buildings, when they get to a certain age, automatically come under that perjury.
Fifth year.
And once that occurs, they then require documentation to review how the building was built, if there was a particular style of construction that was used or types of edifice work on the outside of the building. So in reading the review of the preservation, the historical preservation division, they've pretty much determined that there are unique features of our buildings, meaning the high school and middle school, that we'll have to, well, they will take into consideration when we're doing certain things. For Phase 2, it may not be as critical. Phase 3, it may be probably not.
We're going to try to get the home economics classes delivered in their entirety to the Smithsonian. I'm sure that would be an appropriate display of life in the 1950s. The one I'm concerned about, and we'll be candid, is that unique nature of the ceiling in the John Glenn cafeteria. If Parks and Recreation determines that to be historically significant and we have to replicate it, I'm not going to be happy. That is the one architectural feature that I have some concerns about, but it is one of the areas that will be evaluated.
Okay. So that's Phase 3. We really got to focus on Phase 2 then. And what I'm hoping is the work that our architect is going to do in conjunction with J.C. Broderick, who as one of their services does this type of interface with the historic preservation division. And hopefully get us through that. Then, of course, we'll hop across the bridge to Phase 4, Sealed Room.
And the other good news is because of the baby boom, there are so many public schools that are right around the same age. So our architects, our engineers are very familiar with having to work alongside the regulations of Parks and Recreation. They know how to work with, you know, the planning boards and make sure that we can do what needs to be done without violating the historical significance of the building. So while I know there will be additional hoops that we need to jump through, I'm still confident that all the necessary repairs will be completed as planned.
I just want to, as one of the chairs, thank you very much, John. It was a very thorough report. I just want you to elaborate a little bit so that the audience understands what exactly the third-party review is on that, to clarify that.
Yeah, it's a process.
Additional review, but, you know.
It's a process that SED has set up in order to address their backlog, which is serious in terms of duration. You know, from the time the bond that we are now doing went up to them for review, normally through their office, it would have taken about 36 weeks. In the third-party process, they have a number of architectural firms, not from this area, but from upstate, that is qualified based on the criteria that the SED has set to conduct reviews of our property. Of course, there's a fee associated with that. But the process itself, as we found out with the roof work, which is a little bit simpler than detailed interior work, it took them about six, eight weeks, I think, to get the whole thing done.
So this is, you know, what people are seeing, this is definitely a benefit to us. And it lets us, yes, can be, it lets us to expedite the process so that we're not waiting.
And just so you understand, the challenge is in entirety. The planning approval board at the State Education at State Education Department must approve the plans if we don't use a third-party vendor is a division of two individuals. So this then, one is recently returning from an internship. There are seven hundred and eighty-six school districts in New York State, and many, many, many of us are engaged in capital work. So the year rating to have your plans approved is probably more likely eighteen months these days. So using that third-party approval process, while you have to do a cost-benefit analysis, certainly increases the timeline and allows us to do it.
And just to further elaborate on the cost-benefit analysis, in my mind, I've got two schools that have very poor roofs. If I subject them to another winter of wind, rain, ice, snow, and all that stuff, I could have a real big problem on my hands that would far outweigh the twenty-six thousand dollars that we spent in expediting it and putting us in a position where we could get those used in place before the wind and raining.
I think, John, you and the architects did a nice job in the facilities committee to articulate, we're in the twenty-six thousand dollars government, why would offset future costs and de-escalation of the labor and future, you know, currency that we may have. So I think the committee, you know, when we heard there were twenty-six thousand dollars just past the bond, now you're asking for, you know, for a large sum of money, it makes sense. And how fast the work got done, it makes sense. So thank you for making sure we go the paperwork in, and to that one person in all of you, thank you for getting it done.
I just wanted to note for the people that are watching at home or anybody in the audience, on the website, on the homepage, there is a little logo that has bond information on it, and it's a very detailed summary of what the projected timeline is gonna be for these. So for anybody who's interested, who wants to follow along and wants to know what's going on, that is on the homepage. Click on the logo and the whole thing pops up. They put together a nice chart.
Any other questions?
Mr. McDonald, thank you so much. I just want to commend Mr. McDonald. He has been very passionate from start to finish with the bond project, and as the phases go, you seem to get more and more excited because there's more and more work to be done, and we really commend you and thank you for everything you've put behind it. Thank you.
Next portion of the agenda is residents' remarks. The board cards to all residents to attend its meetings. The second agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons who wish to speak should identify themselves with any organization that they're representing. What are we gonna do, Mrs. Scero? Mrs. Scero, is she there with me? Gotta finish my blurb, if you don't mind. Comments related to district business or any agenda items should be kept as brief as possible, may not exceed three minutes for policy 235-1. Questions or comments concerning matters which are non-the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Hold a discussion of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which the reputations, privacy, or right of due process could be in solely violate district. You may now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Pat Scero. I'm Elwood resident. I'd just like to make three brief comments. First, I'm very happy to see that this board, every month, spends the time to acknowledge many of the employees with a good role they do. I think that's very important, and I think it's very well appreciated. With that in mind, I certainly want to mention Pat Biscardi, who worked in my building for fifteen years, extraordinary human being. Her official title was paraprofessional. Her affectionate title was grandmother, which she really was for all intents and purposes. Social worker, psychologist, counselor, teacher, for all-out kids, she was very well-loved. So thank you for acknowledging that. And finally, had the good fortune, it was Assistant Superintendent for Education Services, Patty Buckeyes, my secretary. And that was 2008, 2009. Extraordinary woman, and I certainly concur with Diane. Bond worker, right, but most importantly, great human relations skills. And when special appointments come in, they're generally apprehensive and not very trusting. And I think Patty quickly refused that and let her know Elwood was there to help their child. So again, thank you for the mention.
Okay, Mrs. Scero. Any other residents for comments? See, we're just finishing the agenda.
With permission of the board, we want to go ahead and reverse the order of the presentations to be made probably tonight. So we'd like to begin by calling upon our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Dunkle, to give the board and committee an overview of the budget process that we've followed for nineteen-twenty budget developments. Ms. Dunkle.
Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget overview. Just a simple presentation tonight to go over the simple process that we start as we go through the budget phase. I'll simply go over the budget timeline for nineteen-twenty, a simple overview of the process, touch base on the twenty eighteen-nineteen budget recap, and some planning items for the nineteen-twenty school year. This is a snapshot of our budget calendar. Typically, we have one budget presentation from now through May before the budget vote actually takes place. Our next meeting is February seventh, voting on all the administrative and capital components of the budget and touch base on the tax level. Three components of the budget. Administrative, capital, and program. In my next few slides, I'll go over the description of each of those and the impact that it does have on our budget. We'll also go over the budget cost drivers, which are the high-cost items that typically push the budget up to the high cost that we have. Food salaries and benefits, BOSI, special education, and transportation. This is typical each year on each budget on most school districts. Administrative component. The administrative component is roughly twelve percent of our overall budget. These are expenditures that are not directly related to student services, that don't deal directly with actual instruction in the classroom. It includes school board operations, the offices of the superintendent, excuse me, the superintendent, district clerk, business office, many administrative items, and all salaries and benefits that are related to each of those specific offices. The capital component is all the operations and maintenance of the school district itself, and again, includes all salaries and benefits related to those items. Any debt service that we incur, which is related to the bond, any tax anticipation notices, and it also includes any transfer of capital that we may have in a particular year for any capital projects that would not be related to the bond. The program component is the largest component of the budget. It's roughly seventy-five percent of the overall budget, and this is directly related to all instructional programs within the budget. It deals with all teacher salaries and benefits, and anything associated with direct classroom activity, textbooks, software, materials, and supplies. It also covers special education and transportation expenses. Our main cost drivers of the budget, our largest items, are salary costs, which are negotiated with each individual unit. That's typically a three, four-year process, depending on negotiations. Our health insurance costs are also negotiated within each of the bargaining agreements. Each employee in the district contribute a certain percentage to the health insurance costs, and again, that's negotiated within the bargaining units themselves. Another piece of the health insurance that's out of our control is our insurance carrier, which is NYSIP. It's used by most New York State municipalities, and again, we have no control over the rates that they distribute to us. It's negotiated up at their level, and we are given the rates, and we have to pay those costs, so they are ever rising. Additionally, the retirement costs with both the teachers' retirement system and the employees' retirement system, they're both mandatory, and those rates, again, are out of our control. Excuse me. And on an annual basis, those rates, again, they come out from both retirement systems. So it's something we anticipate based on trends throughout the year, throughout the prior years, and we budget the best that we can. Sometimes they come in a little higher than we anticipate, sometimes they come in a little bit lower. But it is a mandatory contribution that all the school districts do have to pay. Additional high costs are BOSI services, special education services, utilities, our currently expanding wellness program, and security that has been ever rising as well. In summary, the budget development process typically begins in October, gets in use for April, and final adoption occurs by the Board of Education. I work very closely with my staff and Rose Cider, our district treasurer, who's here. I thank you very much for your assistance thus far. The budget's a roadmap for the district to operate in the following year. We budget the revenues. The revenues and expenditure budgets are approved by the community, and we have to stay on that road to stay within those expenses, you know, overspent. As of today, the budget, you know, we're on track, which is a good thing. The budget also is ever-changing based on the needs of students and the programs within the schools. And some of the things that can throw us off track are things like special education. I kind of skipped a little over here, but for this year, we've had some special education costs that have gone up very high. We've had some students move into the district that weren't anticipated, and, you know, based on their needs and programs, our special education costs are increasing very much. As far as the year-end, twenty eighteen, review status of that, fund balance last year was increased overall by seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, and the assigned fund balance came in at two point four million. School budget, as I mentioned, it's an expense-based budget. It's developed around revenues first and then estimated expenses. We have to anticipate around the revenues. We can't create an expense-based budget that's going to exceed the revenues. So because of the tax gap that's in place, we have to go up with the revenues first and then budget those expenses within that same amount. And as you know, expenses cannot exceed revenues. This is just a little graphic to show that. We try to balance expenditures and revenues on a daily basis, monitoring the trends of previous years, but, you know, in the last few years, you know, expenditures are ever rising, and revenues, as Dr. Bossa mentioned, with state aid, are not rising as much. They're actually decreasing in proportion to the expenditures. As I just mentioned, we're continuously reviewing and comparing to prior year's actual expenditures to make sure we're within those trends. Revenues on that side of the budget, as you know, tax cap, the tax levy is capped by law, state aid, as Dr. Bossa mentioned. Our initial projection is roughly a quarter of a percent with an overall increase of thirty-four thousand dollars. Again, there's not much wiggle room to play with that money there. And another revenue source that we do look at is our fund balance, you know, which is the allocation of what reserves and cut. Speaking of fund balance, our estimates right now continue on a monthly basis to determine the level of funding for the year-end. Our appropriated fund balance for the nineteen-twenty school year is undetermined at this time as we are still working on the tax levy formula, and it's limited based on state aid projections as well. So our goal is to stay within budget, and depending on how much fund balance we have at the end of the year, we can allocate a certain percentage to next year's budget, but I know one of the goals of our board and the community is to reduce the reliance on that particular fund balance. So it is something we are looking to do, is to reduce that, but again, we are facing a lot of challenges, one with the tax gap, and two with our ever-rising costs. And that is all I have for this evening. Any other questions?
You know, in prior years, we felt like a spending freeze on, you know, stuff throughout the buildings. Are we at that point where you're taking off our look at where, uh...
Yes, actually, the spending freeze is tomorrow.
Sorry, guys.
Yeah, the spending freeze is actually tomorrow. I sent out a memo about two weeks ago. January twenty-fifth is the freeze date for those purchases. Anything that's, you know, not completely necessary.
Yeah, I can further answer that question by sharing that I have worked in other places where when the Assistant Superintendent for Business announces a spending freeze, the amount of purchase orders you receive during that brief period of time could knock over an elephant. That is not the case in the Elwood School District. We have building leaders and directors who respect the process and budget accordingly, pooling cover funds for things that are forthcoming like graduation and such, but there is no flood of money to be spent because the flag has been waved. So I want to commend those present and the other members of the team for understanding the process. And, you know, the fact that Ms. Dunkle put the budget, the purchase freeze at the end of January is also some flexibility that is not enjoyed in other places where often spending cutoffs come in early or even early. So we do it well in Elwood, and I would expect that we are in a good position to end the year in the best position possible.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions?
You mentioned rising special education costs. Do we, I know that sometimes that just depends on our student body, right, year to year. Do we have, without using technical terms that I barely know, but like a reserve fund so that it can be flexible, that we hold back a little bit to reserve in case we get a new student that requires a lot?
So I'll go again, because it preceded Ms. Dunkle's arrival in the district. Wise financial planning will always give a good cushion to the special education overall budget because, as Lorraine mentioned, it's one of the higher expense impacts to the budget. Whereas a typical student might average have an education expenditure value of seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars, we have some high-cost special education students that can approach a hundred point five thousand dollars. As the board is well aware, and showing the community as well, not every student who resides in the Elwood School District can attend one of our four public schools. So some of the programs that are necessary to meet the needs of a more handicapped population will have very high tuition costs associated with that. And while we do receive some aid back on those high-cost students, it does not balance the expenses. So we, in this past year's budget, built in quite a comfortable level of additional funds in the event that high-cost students moved in or that the current student population required a higher level of support. We had some students move in over the summer that exhausted the largest percentage of that flexibility we had built in. And one of the transfers that the board is approving tonight is an additional hundred thousand dollars of moving out of other budget codes into special education to further support the needs of our student population. It is very difficult to project what the needs will be of people who don't yet live in the district. And the fact that we had such a large number of high-cost students and the costs associated with their education all happened at the very beginning of the year really took away the flexibility that we had built into the budget, and there's just no way to predict that. So we will have to do without some things that we have intended for other areas of the program in order to appropriately find a special education because there's no choice but to do that.
I know this district is very cognizant of keeping those who should be in-house, in-house. We've built sensory rooms, we've done tons and tons of things here because, of course, we want to try to educate our children if we can. So it just, you know, people need to know that it is not abused, that we're just sending kids out and paying exorbitant amounts. We're doing what's best for children.
And additionally to your point... And additionally to your point, Ms. Manuel, some of the programs that we have created and implemented in our district schools that attract students from other districts who pay tuition in order to attend Elwood schools, so that also becomes a revenue source rather than an expenditure.
Any more questions? Thank you.
All right, during transition, we do have another presentation prepared for the board and community tonight. The board set as a goal this year to really look closely at some of the data surrounding our student programs. We have a bit of that to share with you tonight, but our greater focus is on some of the times we have for some modifications to the program that we're offering our students. And I think the board really appreciate some of the unique perspectives that we will share with you this evening. So that'll lead us in that discussion. I would like to call upon Dr. Hall.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome the team that's here this evening to talk about our high school program, our high school principal, Mrs. Bezinski, our directors, the Van Vees, Mrs. Fai, Mrs. Eileen Kelly Gorman, Director of Technology and Science, and Mr. Dave Shanahan, Director of Athletics and Physical Education. And we are also joined by one of our high school teachers, Mr. Green. Thank you so much for being here. So this evening, our goal is to talk to you about the program that we will be putting together for next September. And the way that we're going to do that is first, we're going to talk about how we get started and that's really about our purpose. What is it that we are trying to achieve when we're putting the program together? We're also going to briefly talk to you about the timeline that we follow and then we will be introducing the enhancements for next year. And we're also going to talk to you a little bit about what's happening with our AP Capsule program. That was one of the enhancements that we introduced two years ago. So as we conclude the second year, we'd like to update you on how that's going. And as part of that, we would like to show you how the enrollment is in all of our AP classes. A couple of months ago, we talked about the progress of our students on their AP coursework and exams and we just like to be here overview of enrollment. And finally, we'd like to talk to you about our initial proposals for 2021 because that is the timeline. When we're talking about our course guide and when we're thinking about it, all the different departments in the high school, where do we begin with enhancements? What programs do we want to focus on? It really is centered, excuse me, around student needs and student interests. That is the heart of the work. And I think our district mission statement really guides that. And just to capture a few of the sentences from that, "We serve a diverse community and value the unique skills and qualities of all of our students from kindergarten through senior year. Our mission is to provide an excellent educational experience that empowers and inspires each student to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally in evolving global society." And I think that really does guide our purpose of work and explains how we develop courses in a variety of subjects and for students at many different levels. The other thing that guides the work is beginning with graduation requirements. Our goal from when our students are in middle school through their entrance into high school is working toward their graduation. And part of that is also looking at subject sequences. There are courses that students begin in eighth grade and they continue through high school and a part of our responsibility is to create opportunities to continue those studies. Another area that's important is what are our students interested in? For example, we sometimes propose electives. When we're doing that, we want to make sure that it's something that meets our students' needs and also gives them a variety of subjects so that they can have diversity in what they're studying and introduce them to different subject areas so that they have a better opportunity to pick a college and a major that will really meet their needs and their interests. And finally, really so important about all of this is educational excellence. We definitely speak with our neighboring school districts. We look at what other high schools offer, not only on Long Island but across the state and we want to be on the cutting edge. We want to be on the leading edge. We want to provide an excellent program for our students so that they have the greatest opportunity so that whatever their choices are, going into career, going into college, that we know that we provided them with background, that they have an opportunity to be where they want to be. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask our high school principal, Mrs. Bezinski, to come up and talk to us a little bit about the rationale that went into the choices for this year's enhancements.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Hall indicated, and I'll probably echo, there are many influences that help to shape the program decisions at John Franklin High School. To start, we always reflect on our vision statement, which we proudly post on our website. And this vision statement was crafted in conjunction with our members of the shared decision-making team after reviewing some faculty input, what do we want to provide for the students of John Franklin High School. And Mrs. Tella is here with us in the audience and I want to just thank her for her contributions to what I believe to be a really great vision statement. But at the heart of the vision statement, we talk about first and foremost, creating a safe learning environment, but then we talk about an engaging learning environment and a diverse curriculum that supports the needs of each of our students. We spoke tonight about special education students, we talked about AP students. Each student is an individual and we look at our course offerings and we try to capture the programs that meet each of our students' individual customized needs. And it says that in our vision statement, that we want each of our students to reach his or her unique potential. So ultimately, we do employ a whole-child approach and seek to offer courses that will enable, again, each child to reach his or her true potential. With that in mind, I engage in ongoing conversations all the time on a daily basis with the directors, the middle school administration, Dr. Hall. We're constantly engaging in conversations centered around evaluating our student population and our course offerings. So oftentimes, we are just echoing this vision, this mission of what we want to offer for our students. The course offerings that we present in our guide each year, they're not a rollover. We are constantly evaluating the trends in our student population. We're looking at, does this reflect balance in all of our content areas? So do we have enough course offerings in English and how are we fairing in the arts and music and even technology? Further, we want to offer a program that supports students who are looking to experience that capsule level in each of our discipline areas. So can we offer a higher level? So last board meeting, we talked about introducing AP Calculus BC, like that's the next level. And that might only reflect a small population, but again, we're trying to look at each student and maximize their course offerings and their schedule. As always, this includes building up our AP course offerings, as we've discussed in previous meetings, and dual enrollment course opportunities that afford our students the opportunity if they should wish to take a course for college credit. And finally, any new course that is proposed and approved by me must, as Dr. Hall mentioned, meet the ever-changing New York State regulations, assist students first and foremost with fulfilling their graduation requirements, and be aligned with the various shifts in our content areas across the board. So it's an ongoing dialogue that we're constantly reviewing. The next slide will just give you an overview of a generic timeline. So as we engage in these curricular conversations, there comes a moment where we say, we have to build a master schedule for the next school year. And the building of a master schedule is a complex and fluid process. Again, you just saw rollover year to year. As I mentioned, we're constantly reviewing the course offerings and our student interests to inform our decisions and to help us prioritize for each school year. The ultimate goal is to create a master schedule that provides our students with a bevy of robust course offerings and diverse electives so that they may create individualized schedules that, as Dr. Hall mentioned, makes them competitive with their counterparts on Long Island, across the state. Again, we are communicating with colleges, what does a nearly competitive schedule look like? Colleges look at our school profile when evaluating students, like why didn't you take advantage of this opportunity? So, and again, we want to push each child to meet the highest level of their potential. So, and as we prepare the course guide for the 2019 school year, we draw upon discussions that have taken place last school year and in some cases, five years ago. When I first arrived here at John Franklin High School as the Assistant Principal, I worked in direct consultation and collaboration with Mrs. Fai and we immediately began to talk about offering pre-AP world history. That was five years ago. We began the conversation. So if we look at prior school years, 1718, discussions of new courses, we were having this discussion with departments in 1415, 1516. What does pre-AP world look like? Why should we offer it to our students? We collect the data from our contiguous districts. Are you offering it? How is it benefiting our students? What are the instructional implications? You really can't present to a department, we're going to offer this in class, here you have to teach it. How does this then impact shifts in other coursework? How do we prepare our students for the behavior to create success? How do we identify the staff member that can take on this course and provide them with meaningful professional development so that they feel successful? What resources do we need to procure in order for them to be, again, successful in the rollout of this course? So just using last year as an example, 1718, we were speaking about really bringing world pre-AP to fruition. We've identified the staff member, Ms. Fai and I spoke with that staff member, spoke with the department. Ms. Fai engaged in bringing that staff member down, I shouldn't say down, over to the middle school so that they can begin the articulation, how does this impact the eighth graders? How does this impact the 10th grade curriculum? So there's a lot of ongoing conversation before we introduce one course. And as I mentioned, in some cases, it's a five-year dialogue. So then in the fall of 2018, this school year, essentially, once the master schedule was built last year for this school year, we open up the school door and we look, everything's okay, and we immediately begin to start to evaluate trends. Are students staying in the classes that they registered for or are they dropping? Again, because our counselors are having greater conversations with our students, we see less attrition from courses, we see students taking courses that they feel are reflective of their ability. So in 2018, again, we resurrect conversations that we started last year or the years before and we begin to propose new courses for the 1920 school year. We want to be judicious that we're not like offering too many courses that students will go in, you know, three students will select a course and then, you know, we don't run it. So we make these decisions in consultations with the department members and we rely heavily on the feedback of our teachers as well. Then we begin to promote the new courses. This is what we're offering in the respective disciplines. Teachers spend time speaking to their students at each level, saying if you're in an English nine class, okay, class, this is what we're offering next year as English 10 options. And those teachers will speak to the students in addition to our counselors. Once students have a good idea of the course offerings, we then ask our teachers in December to send to us, the administration, and to guidance, and to parents that we post on the portal, what are your recommendations for each child? It's not a fait accompli, but it's a guiding recommendation, right? Teachers say, I think we should go to this level. It's an opportunity for students to have conversations with teachers, for parents to call the teacher and say, hey, I was wondering why. So teacher recommendation process starts in December. There's a video that we present to our students in homeroom to talk about the importance of the scheduling process that also takes place in December. I shared that video out with the families via school messenger and it's posted on the website so that people can go back and reflect upon the process. Once the students have seen the video, the teacher recommendations are in, we ask that the parents engage in dialogue with their students as the students begin the course selection process. The students will then submit their course request to the counselors. And that's where, as you know, at this point, our counselors are engaging in already conversations with students about their course requests for the 1920 school year. They've met with the freshmen through freshman seminar, sophomores, there were passes that were assigned to them through homeroom, and now our counselors are well underway with our junior conferences with parents. Again, engaging in constant articulation with the Elwood Middle School Administration team. And once we get a good understanding of the courses that we offer and then we have to determine whether or not there's curriculum that needs to be reviewed and written in order to ensure that our staff is ready to meet those changes in the following school year. So that's a general overview. Additionally, once we have the course request and we have the teachers identified and we have all of the competing factors in our kind of understanding, we turn it over to Mr. Cole and we say, can you please make this magic happen? And then he begins building the master schedule, which as I mentioned, is a very fluid, intricate, detailed process. And we thank him in advance for his efforts because they truly are masterful and impressive. I'm really excited to call upon my colleagues, Ms. Pam Fai, Ms. Eileen Kelly Gorman, and Mr. Dave Shanahan, to share with you some of the enhancements that we're going to include in the course guide this year as a result of some of these very rich, robust conversations. Thank you.
Good evening. The slide before you now speaks to some of the proposed courses for the upcoming school year. Our overall objective in proposing the following courses was to provide students with more choice in the elective process with a hope that they would create balance between the disciplines. The proposed courses also expand on offerings in art, health and wellness, and more. We also have work to provide greater access to challenging courses for students and offer selections that will support our district goals around mental health and equity. So the first course listed there, Mrs. Bezinski spoke towards, is our pre-AP World course. So next year will be the first year that we will be introducing this course and pre-AP World is designed to teach students the skills and strategies that they need in order to be successful in this college-level course. We know that pre-AP World is a 10th grader. Currently, it's usually the first time students are engaging in a college-level course. So what they have to do simultaneously, learn the skills and the content and the tasks for the exam and then they test it on the end of the year. Our hope is that by providing pre-AP World, we can focus on the skills and techniques and introduce the tasks that the students will need to be successful in on the exam in ninth grade without giving them the pressure of having the actual AP exam at the end of the year. And our goal is that students can then focus their attention and apply these skills in 10th grade, paying attention to the content. And really, our hope is that in doing so, we will increase our students' ability, we'll open more pathways for mastery. Additionally, we believe that the skills that the students will learn in ninth grade will be transferable to any course that they take, whether they decide to pursue additional AP courses on his level courses or certainly reach his level courses. The next courses that we're introducing is actually two classes that have run previously. They are Elements of Drama and Themes in Film. Both of these courses require students to apply the same analytical skills that they utilize when reading texts in all their English classes. However, each of these courses present information in a different way and allows students to pursue their interests. In Elements of Drama, our students will have opportunities to analyze playwrights, plays, study the history of playwrights, perform plays, look at various performances of plays and discuss techniques. And then ultimately, our goal is for them to be able to craft and perform their own works. In Themes of Film, our students will be studying various films, comparing the presentation of the same films. They will be looking at performances and studying the evolution of film through the 20th and 21st century. And our last course there is Conversational Italian. Currently, we run conversational Spanish too and this Italian course will mimic the same process. So our students will work towards building, expand their skills in communication, they will take on leadership roles, develop activities, be responsible for conducting interviews, engaging in class discussions. be responsible for conducting interviews, engaging in class discussions, doing long-term projects. And this course will also integrate a lot more of the cultural elements within the Italian field. So I would like to welcome Mr. Shanahan to talk about our health enhancements.
Mrs. Fine, I just have a good question.
Yes.
For people viewing at home, the Pre-AP World History would be in lieu of Global...
Yes, currently, we have Global R and Global H, 9H. We will still maintain those courses for next year. This will just be an additional avenue. It will be a precursor in order to take AP World History the following year as a 10th grader. It's a prerequisite.
Okay, so I have a question?
Yes.
So, my question would be, Pre-AP World's depression. The first one is, will it be weighted?
Yes, weighted.
Okay, so it'll be like a tier above the others. Suppose you get a kid who takes honors in ninth grade and who doesn't feel that they have the confidence to go take the Pre-AP itself and then wants to take AP. Would cutting off an opportunity for that child by saying, "If you didn't take AP World 9, you can't take, you know..."
Because right now, they're able to take AP World.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems to me like, instead of expanding on an opportunity, we're cutting it off. I think that's just more clarification.
Well, our hope is that students who believe that they want to pursue that route, they would take the opportunity to enroll in the Pre-AP World class. However, this is the first time we'll be offering the course. If there is a student, we will address that student by student.
As part of the preparation that went into proposing this over the years, we conducted surveys over several years with surrounding school districts who have implemented Pre-AP World to ask how they handle students who either don't enter in ninth but want to enter in 10, or students who enter in ninth and want to leave and go to honors level in the 10th grade. And we found that by and large, schools try to hold homework together because what's so challenging about AP World, besides the fact that it's the first time many students are trying AP, is that it represents a full year of college. It's two semesters of college and two semesters of high school, where the other AP courses are one semester college courses taught in two semesters of high school. So it's challenging just to begin with. So you really do need that two years to try and see that lift that other schools have experienced. And when I first was researching this myself, like, maybe seven years ago, at that time, college board was very strict. They didn't want to talk about Pre-AP in ninth grade. They didn't want to recognize it. They didn't want you to use the name. They've evolved as well. They've recognized the challenge of AP World. And they are actually in discussions where they might make Pre-AP World a formal course now and have Global History split into two APs. So it's really part of how we help students engage in this very dense work and then also learn the skills and strategies and the tasks that are unique to this field. So, we will be communicating with our eighth grader. That's already started. We will be providing parents' information and students' information. That's a big part of the dialogue between the two buildings so that our eighth graders can make informed decisions about where they think they would be. And of course, we will look to have some degree of flexibility, but we are very much going to encourage people to make that decision because it will be a struggle for someone to jump in in the 10th grade without having had all of that background. But that's part of our communication, and that's part of making sure we educate our students and our parents on what this means and how they can make an informed choice at the end of the eighth grade.
Additionally, we believe that particularly in the areas such as today's, there's so many opportunities for students to engage as they move through the high school in AP-level courses. So we wanted to really provide an opportunity to build baseline skills and then progress into the first course.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come and speak tonight. I really appreciate it very much. I'm going to speak to a little bit of coaching energy here. It's late night, it's getting a little late. But the course, we liked it, offered something called Health Wellness: Living Your Best Life. The genesis of this course started three years ago. I had a conversation with Dr. Ruck, one of my first years being an administrator, and asking him about a course we could provide to our 11th and 12th graders. His input back to me was, "We have a great course at Sation High School. I think it'd be worthwhile for you and to help staff to go see it." I said, "Great idea." So upon this recommendation, we set up a visit to Sation High School, and we saw their health effect. Got their coursework, went to see two classes, spoke to the kids, spoke to the administration in private, and we got a great idea far as how we want to implement this course. Our health staff loved it, so here we are today. So, the purpose of this course, it's provided well-grounded foundation of health for our juniors and seniors. Preparing our students to make great decisions regarding their health during the critical years of high school and post-high school is of paramount importance to us and to them. Topics in this course include college life, hazing, managing stress, violence and abuse, addictions, alcohol, illicit drugs, tobacco, caffeine, vaping, e-cigarettes, nutrition, weight control, personal fitness, cardiovascular disease, cancer, STDs, dating violence, personal finance, yoga and mindfulness, healthy aging, and the death and dying. This is going to be an outstanding course where emphasis is placed on growing students' decision-making skills, personal values, self-advocacy, refusal skills, and conflict resolution. The health department will work hard to educate the mind, body, and soul of our students. So currently, our health classes are taught in ninth grade. A lot of ninth graders, some 10th graders get it. Just recently moved our health class from eighth grade to seventh grade last year. So I think, you know, far as the thinking process behind it, we need something for 11th and 12th graders. You're about to leave high school, you're young though. A lot of things are happening between ninth and 12th grade and the next step far as college, making those decisions. So I think, you know, from our standpoint, educating the mind, the soul, the body before they leave, give them that knowledge, that soul of the heart to make those good decisions is really, really important part of why we want this course to run. I had some conversations with a lot of kids throughout the days over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, asking for their input as well, and they feel there's something that is needed as well. So hopefully, this will run. And I think the kids, once it is up and running, they're going to enjoy this class thoroughly, all right? And it's not just in, it's for everybody, from kids, you know, from different backgrounds or AP to kids who are in special ed. They could all do well in this type of class. So I thank you for hearing me out. Any questions?
So, I have two kids at home, so I totally appreciate this course that's coming out. One of the biggest concerns of parents is that when you go to college is actually their physical safety. You know, there's the date rape jobs that are out, and you know, what happens to both, you know, both my kids have prior experiences with. So my question is, is that is this something that's going to be covered in the course? Because it's such a...
Well, that's, part of this course is covering what's happened, especially your first semester of going to college. And obviously, your daughter goes to Auburn, she's away from home, and a lot of things that happen, if you look at some of the data out there, in the first half of the year, when kids are away from home, the mistakes they're making regarding with, you know, dating, with alcohol, and they're not really, they don't understand how to handle situations like that or how to weave themselves out of a situation, and they may not want to be. This course is really geared to that type of thinking of how am I going to get myself out of a bad situation? And obviously, no means no to somebody. And you have to be, you present, you know, how you feel about certain issues. So that's what type of we're gearing that towards.
It's very exciting.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, yes. And, but, I am still, Ms. Kell...
I just want to say, it's great that we're already having an in-classroom environment with this, but you've been bringing it out to the Elwood school district quite some time. That they've been still in great eyes always doing this on and off the field and the classroom. To have a classroom for people like to transition all the way, I think it's right up your alley, and it did surprise me when I saw them list.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shanahan. Obviously, I have to, we have some great help here from our team here of support. And I know, I'm going to, Ms. Kelly, to talk about possible college credit work.
It's a tough act to follow. So, one idea that we came up with as a way to perhaps entice students to take the course and also to offer an additional benefit to students is to try to work with Suffolk, to offer it for credit. So, our health teachers, Mr. Shanahan, spent some time, and they have prepared the necessary course syllabus. They have to each submit their own transcripts, resume, because it's really a two-part process with Suffolk. You have to have your courses approved, and then you also have to have your teachers approve. So right now, we are in the process of investigating it. Suffolk is very interested. We're not sure where it's going to end up because no other high school is doing this right now. So they have to, it's the first time that they'll be accrediting a course of this nature, but they were very interested in partnering with us. And Mr. Shanahan and Ms. Ott and Mr. Hanner have all been dedicating a good amount of time to putting that paperwork together. So we're looking forward to hearing that.
So I think, this is so exciting. I don't think you're going to need much encouragement for children to sign up for this. I just noted on here that they should request this on their schedule next year. My two high schoolers. Providing that it's going to be in the budget next year. But I think it's real life. You know, these kids are experiencing this stuff now, earlier than we did as children. And this is just amazing. They need to know this going in. These discussions didn't happen when a lot of us were going into college. They just wasn't spoken about at home. And in many households, it's still not spoken about at home. So I applaud you for this, very forward-thinking and good stuff.
I just want to clarify, so if you are going to do a home office. And then it would be as like an elective, like a health elective in college, which, you know, all the kids really have to take any.
Feeling for hateful work, we're moving forward with that. We've got some guidance from Suffolk, Suffolk already, how you proceed. So, Ms. Kelly's help and Ms. Fine's help if you can bring that out.
And is there a textbook that's associated with? I know about a year or two ago, we approved a new health book that I actually had the opportunity to really look through, and we had discussions on it. It's a great book because what it does offer is it's such a fluid environment. It's a constant change in this health field, issues of vaping, which we presented by Dr. Sidiki last night. Something that wasn't in conversation five years ago, and now it's an epidemic that, you know, is really a big concern. One of the things that the health book that we have looked at that we're currently using has PSAs in there and is very, has an online component that I thought was just an incredible resource. Or do you have something like that for this course so that it's, you know, evolving and it's up to date?
That's a great question. We have Sation's curriculum, we've looked at it thoroughly. We also have our online edition from our textbooks we purchased two years ago, and that's constantly being updated, following the vaping or opioids. So we could use that, but, you know, I think combined together, we're going to put the best product in place for the students. We already have their edition, and we're going to use some of the stuff we have already. And some of the things that I've spoken to our health department about, Mr. Hanner said to me the other day, he said, "I love something small in health kids really think about far as, you know, you got a flat, kids have to change the flat tire. I want to show them how to change the flat tire. They're on the New York State thruway, and they're in a bind. How to change the flat tire."
How to write a check.
How to write a check. How to balance it. How to balance it. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The other thing, and that is we do have the library on a online basis. We purchased the college-level one for the CAPS program when we initially started at Fugue Store. And so they have access to all of the materials that are on that site as well.
So that online college library is open to every student in the high school? Every student in the elementary? It's just going to be...
The high school, it's licensed.
Yes.
I'm sorry if I missed, it's a one-year course? It's a half-year course.
Is it project-based or is it just curriculum-based?
So we're asking many questions, but it's so fascinating.
Part of the course, what I really liked is a lot of self-reflection piece.
Okay.
So part of this is, it's good enough to have a journal. And their journaling, a lot of their grades comes from the journal. Not just the quizzes, but this course is really, it's really not about testing. It's about life, it's about coming together and learning things that are really important. Part of, God, the part in, what you're told, the whole child. So that's a big part of it, having a journal and being self-reflective and what the teacher's saying, what your own philosophy.
Well, I appreciate it because as a child, you know, a student going into college, we realize that they're great, we know as adults that their brains don't fully develop until they're like 25. So we send them off thinking they've graduated high school, they're these really smart kids, and they're going to make smart decisions. And any parent who has a college who knows that, you know, they'll call you up and go, "What the heck did you do that for? That was a dumb thing." So, you know, I appreciate that somebody's going to be guiding them along before they take that next step because everybody knows they listen to a teacher or a peer more than they listen to what their parents have to say. Unfortunately.
You still have to take care of your parents.
I have, so to stick here, thank you. Thank you.
All right, my question, I'm merely excited. We're going to move to the right side here. And after speaking with our technology teachers, our guidance counselors, high school administration, next year, we are going to try to split one of our technology courses into two half-year courses to see if we can raise student enrollment, make it a little bit more... Students more able to take the course, help them fit it into their schedules. Our sports, technology, and engineering courses were proposed as a reflection of growth in the professional fields around these concepts as well as student interest in these fields. So things like pitching machines, radar guns. They are going to be able to come up with their own ideas and hopefully manufacture some of that through Project Resilience. Our ecology elective was proposed by two of our high school science teachers, Mr. Greening, who is in the audience, and Mrs. Reagan, as an alternative elective to our anatomy and forensics courses. They found that their students, particularly in anatomy, where half of the class is really interested in anatomy and pursuing, you know, something more along with the medical field, and that the other half of the students are looking for something to balance out their forensics elective. And so we thought that by offering something that is a little bit more relatable to some students and perhaps high interest currently, that it might prove to be a beneficial elective for high school students. So the course will examine things like climate change, energy, natural resources, pollution, and environmental concerns that are specific to our region and community. It is designed to capture student interest in learning about their community and how they can personally impact change. We have already received approval from the NCAA for this course to count as a half-science credit for our student athletes who may be applying for college. And we felt that was important to do ahead of time before we go and propose this to students to take. Lastly, on the bulletin list there, we will be adding a college marketing class in our business department for juniors and seniors. This course has also been approved through Suffolk for their Beacon program as a dual enrollment course. So students will have the option to take it for credit, not, and I think this is important to know, not every child in the course has to take it through Suffolk, but it is an option if you are in the course. And that's for all of these classes. So students can take the health class and not pay for the credits, but if they're interested in it and we get approval, they're going to be able to take it. So they run concurrently as the course. Students in this course will learn about advertising, salesmanship, buying, and more. The addition of college marketing will create a three-year sequence in the business department for students if they're interested in pursuing that field. This would then be the third course in that sequence that they would be able to take.
And the other two in the sequence would be accounting and finance.
Yeah, the 10th grade elective would be personal finance and is it sports management? Then in 11th grade, it would be the accounting one course, and that would be into the marketing course.
Okay, if the accounting one is a dual, is it the same thing?
Yep, that's also dual enrollment.
That would be two. Is the sports management a dual?
It is not, but we also haven't pursued that because Suffolk will only allow students who are in 11th or 12th grade to take. And this is actually not just... And this is actually not just Suffolk. Most colleges only allow juniors and seniors to take courses for credit. They want students to have a certain level of maturity before they start to enroll in those courses.
So that's the distinction between AP, where a child can take that coming into ninth grade, for more funding than most schools, as opposed to a dual enrollment, that really, they have to be in a, more than a couple of classes to take.
Right. I mean, there are other elements also that distinguish them, but that is. So that's one reason though why we haven't pursued that. It's really only for 11th and 12th graders. So this is an expansion of our AP Capstone program. Currently, we are in the second year of implementing the Capstone program. We are running both AP Capstone seminar and AP Capstone research. Students have shared that in the seminar course, they feel it's very rigorous. However, when we surveyed them in June, 89% of our students in the class indicated that overall, they were very glad that they did enroll and that they had learned a lot about time management, about research skills, about how to present and public. As other Long Island districts in our consortium had predicted, most of our 10th grade seminar students did opt to wait a year before enrolling in the research course. And so the college board estimate is that there's an attrition between seminar and research of about 66%. In June, 74% of our students indicated that they did plan to take the course before they graduated. They were just, most of them were putting it off. Our high school counselors are still in the process of meeting with students to plan for the 1920 school year. However, based on our conversations with them and some preliminary information sheets that students have submitted, we are anticipating approximately 20 students to enroll in research in September. As indicated on this slide, we're currently discussing allowing seminar in lieu of English 12 as well. Students who make this decision would not be eligible for the Capstone diploma because they won't have enough time to complete that research course before they graduate. However, it's still a valuable experience, and so it's something we're looking to possibly offer to them. So to tell you a little bit more about the impact the course is having on students, it is my pleasure to introduce one of our Capstone teachers, Mr. Green.
Thank you very much. So before I begin, I'd just like to thank the board of Dr. Bossert, Dr. Hall, Ms. Kelly, Gordon, and Ms. Fine, and Ms. Przyzynski for giving me the opportunity to teach the AP Capstone courses and for trusting me to lead Elwood students through what I believe to be two of the most important courses that I've been taking. So last year, Mr. Chassnoff and I had an opportunity to come up and speak to you guys about AP Seminar. And our students did very well in the first year. And with some updates that the program did a lot more intensive writing this year, we think that this year, they'd be even better suited to succeed at a higher level. So this year, I've also had the pleasure of teaching the inaugural class of AP Research, and having the opportunity to see our students kind of flourish as researchers and take all their research to the next level and become independent researchers rather than guided researchers. So for those who aren't aware, AP Research is the second course in the two-course sequence in AP Capstone, and it builds upon the skills developed in AP Seminar. But it also builds a lot of independent skills. So the primary goals of the research class are to conduct a thorough literature review on a specified topic of their choice, to then identify a gap in the existing body of knowledge for that particular topic, which is one of the most intensive processes in the entire research process. And then to design a very well-aligned inquiry investigation to address that gap. And then from that inquiry investigation, they have to report their findings regarding the inquiry investigation in an academic manner through written and oral platforms, and then reflect meaningfully on the entire process. And then after they've presented their information in their oral dissertation, just as in a doctoral dissertation or master's thesis, they also have to go through an oral defense of their research and answer a few questions from that three-person pack. So while there are a lot of different important skills that the students learn, the most important are effective time management, resilience, and academic independence. So the research process is demanding and strenuous, and for anybody who's done any sort of upper-level research, often extremely frustrating. And our students have experienced all of that this year. So mismanagement of time can create even bigger levels of frustration. And I've seen a lot of growth already in both of our students. Proper management of time will be essential to them in college and in everyday life, which often is overlooked for students who usually have been pushed to the limits since eighth-grade honors and competitive sports begin. And overstressing them is very detrimental to their physical and their mental health. So we make sure we build in a lot of time to plan accordingly throughout the week, and then also take a couple of minutes at home, relax, and build in some relaxation time in this day and of the day. The task of dealing with setback after setback can also be daunting and defeating. And this course, as I said before, offers plenty of opportunity for setback. From exhaustive literature reviews and lesson-type survey results to unresponsive expert advisors, they've all had the privilege of facing tough and difficult challenges with their own research. So fortunately, a driving force for them is the investment they have in their individual projects. Unlike any other course in their high school career, they have full autonomy over what they get to study in this course. And it gives them the freedom they need to really pursue their passions and see if the things that they might want to pursue in college are truly of interest to them or if they might want to go in a different direction. So I think my favorite thing is kind of seeing their reaction to being able to pursue things they truly love. And they're all showing that in, I guess, their emotion when they do the presentation. So it's been nice to see that investment and their growth. And then just the last thing is that the main focuses are usually the sciences or the humanities. But regardless of which pathway they pursue, the research skills are applicable no matter where they go in the future. Right? Research is research, and it's just a matter of what method you apply within that research to come to your ultimate understanding. And because this is such a process-driven course, it doesn't matter if they end up coming up with no usable data or results, as long as they follow a solid process, they can still achieve a high level in the work doing that at this point. Thank you.
I was going to ask about the expert advisors, because I remember at the course introduction, a year or two ago, it was that they would be connected with an expert in the field they were researching in the community or through online, you know, relationship or whatever. So they are, every student is connected with an expert advisor to what they're researching?
So the students have to do all that background work by themselves to try to get their expert advisors? It's not a requirement in order to get a score for the AP? It's encouraged because, especially for kids that are pursuing technical research, they want somebody who can help walk them through the jargon and the technicalities of determining what method is most appropriate, but it's not a requirement. Our, both of our students have actually called upon teachers within the district to help them in different matters. So for both of them, both actually used Mr. Pushy to help them find statistical analysis methods. And other than that, they relied on their background research to kind of drag them through. They were unsuccessful in a lot of their attempts to try to contact some of the advisors they found, or some of the people who were their advisors in their background research. So you know, some people that they didn't require.
Right, and we don't provide that for them, and that is on their own to find. We do not connect them or suggest them. We don't have a network?
Now, one of the biggest things about the AP Research course especially is the independence and the fact that one of the skills that we need to know is that they have to do the lettering. That when they get to college, there's not actually someone that goes and finds some advisors. There's actually someone going to talk to the professor for them. They have to put in that work and give it themselves. So while I can help talk them, help guide them with writing the introduction letters, they actually have to send all the information and pursue them.
I just, my question, Kelly, you know, was off on that. Is any, either of them doing it in conjunction with the science research concurrently?
They're not. There are some possible opportunities for doing so, but the college board recommended not to do that for a couple of reasons, yeah. One of the main reasons is that the restrictions on the AP Research course are more rigorous, that these students really aren't allowed to get any outside help in terms of tweaking the paper, that they're supposed to do it all themselves and through peer review. Whereas the science research courses, they're allowed to get much more help from outside advisors and actually get more direct feedback in terms of specific methods, rewording the paper, and all that. So in addition, a lot of those science research-type papers are built up over the course of a couple of years of research. Whereas the AP Research, it specifically states that it's from the end of the previous school year through the submission date deadline of the current school year. So it's no more than about a nine-month to 10-month period.
It's a great class, I firsthand know. It is super challenging, but I think they're going to be well, well-prepared for college. Many of us went into college only going formatting a paper. So this is great. Is there any drawback to skipping taking research in the 11th grade and take it in 12? I mean, obviously, 12th grade, you get to take it as your English, which is great. So not as an elective, because most of their electives are already done by the time they're in their senior year. And then why don't we get to take it in 11th grade as your English?
So the reason for the 11th grade decision, I believe, was that there's a English Regents exam at the end of 11th grade. And because of that, they need to have an English course that would teach them those specific skills to pass that or to have at least a sufficient chance of passing that. For the students who are taking research in 12th grade as opposed to 11th grade, I don't think they necessarily miss out by not taking 11th grade. 11th grade tends to be their heaviest year in terms of course load of APs. So by taking 12th grade, they can actually focus a little more intently on their research.
Probably good preparation for making.
They're a little more mature too.
Yes. A little more fresh to, you know.
Exactly. Oh yeah, and we do have a short video from one of our current AP Research students who's going to be our first AP Capstone diploma recipient.
Feel that the seminar really helped shape my work for the research course because with seminar, it really gave me a good experience in actually doing the research and being more hands-on. And while it was designed on a set topic, it helped lead me to be able to research on my own and improve my ability to understand what I'm seeing as well as find better sources in the research class. And I feel that they really paired well together and helped improve my research.
Okay, so what has been your greatest challenge in the AP Capstone classes?
I'd probably say working on giving a formal presentation, because I don't have much experience with that, other than a few speeches or presentations in class. And this is different having, presenting a full project on your own without anybody else helping you. And that was a big thing for me to overcome.
Okay, where do you say your greatest success is?
Definitely being able to benefit myself in the actual research and be able to gain more confidence in my process and know that what I'm doing actually works through this class.
All right, so can you please describe some of the skills you've developed or strengthened as a result of the AP Capstone classes?
Definitely time management, because there's a lot of free time in those classes, and it's up to you to make your own schedule, especially during the AP Research part of the two. And by me having all this responsibility, I stopped myself from procrastinating and was able to better manage my time.
All right, can you please describe your research and the research process a little bit?
My research is on stem cells and seeing if there's any way that there'd be a correlation between a person's education level and their decision to fund one of the two stem cells, either adult or embryonic, based on being educated. And I kind of came up with this question through finding the basic research of what's currently known throughout the field of stem cells, and narrowing that down into what's not known, and kind of come up with a question that I could feasibly answer within a given couple of months and be able to have some to show for it.
All right, so how do you think these courses, AP Seminar and AP Research, will help you in college and the future?
I feel that especially the time management and the research aspects are going to help me out, because especially for college, you're on your own, and it's up to you to figure out when you're going to study, when you're going to work, as well as having a social life. And it helped get a balance before actually being in college, so I didn't have a deficit once I began.
Great. And can you tell us, why would you recommend AP Capstone to other students?
The main reason I would is just that it prepares you for college. It really gets your mind set for research and how to approach it, and kind of helps keep procrastination from occurring because it's on your own, and that really pushes you to do your own work. And that would be the main reason.
So there's other questions, we'll turn it over to Dr. Hall.
Thank you so much, Mr. Green. For the past two summers, Mr. Green has attended training, mostly out of state, I believe. And also each summer, Mrs. Fine and Mrs. Halliwell have also gone, and Mr. Chassnoff has attended. And we've also had some of the teachers attend, such as Mr. Kowal, our English department. And so we appreciate the time they invest to prepare for this course. It's a lot of rigorous training for our teachers as well, and we appreciate the passion that you bring to it. And it's wonderful, we have passion in our students. So the next thing that I just wanted to go over briefly to answer some questions. I'm going to start with this slide. And this is just looking at our AP overall. But before I do that, I just want to take a moment to talk about our enrollment. So as we look at our students in 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, when I first shared this with you, I gave you just the total enrollment figures, and that was at the bottom of the big chart. But here, we're really taking a look at where are our students by grade level. And the reason that we're showing this is because students take their AP exams predominantly in 11th and 12th grade, and then some take it in 10th grade when they're participating in AP World. Or perhaps a super-accelerated student might get into a science AP a little early. But really, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade are where students are enrolling in these courses. So as we look at our population, we are definitely declining. We had 746 students at Glenn in 1617. We had 715 last year, and this year, we're at 687. But it has a particular impact on APs because, if you look at the 9th grade, that really has not changed that much. So the decline in the population is happening right now at our upper grades. So we are going to see a shift in our APs, because one of the things that we're always assessing is access to AP. That's been an important initiative of our district. We know we've seen success with it. So the last row here shows us, what is the percentage of total enrollment taking at least one AP? And we see we had about 37%, going to 39, and now at 35. So when we're assessing these figures, we're looking at, how does it fit in our schedule? It's in 11th to 12th grade. And that's why the fact that the decline is happening at the grade level eligible to take an AP sometimes impacts enrollment. Even with the decline in enrollment, we see some robust figures in terms of our actual AP enrollment, going back to this slide. And what we see first is how many students took a specific class in 1617? How many children took that class in 1718? And then how many students are currently enrolled? And this reflects students that stayed with the class for the whole year. And what we see is just the different pattern shifts. Without running percentiles, it's hard for us to say, well, this means this, this means that. If the cohort is bigger in 11th or 12th grade, depending on when they take a class, that could influence it. We see that our AP Capstone here, our Year 1, our Year 2, Research, our Year 1 here. We also have certain things, for example, AP Computer Science Principles. First year, we offered that with 1617. We're not running it this year, we didn't have sufficient requests for that. Excuse me, last year, we didn't. And then this year, we are running it with 25 students. Also, AP Music Theory, last year is the very first year we've offered it. And because of the size of the cohort of children who would take Music Theory, we offer it alternate year. But on the year that we're not offering Music Theory, we're offering Introduction to Music Theory non-AP. So we're hoping that this will always have a group of students, whether they're in 11th or 12th grade, who are ready to take the AP Theory course. And the really small course like AP Studio Art, that's one of the courses that runs concurrent, meaning there's two courses happening in that room at the same time. And some of the students are registered for AP Studio Art, and some of the students are registered for art. The way that works is there has to be a close connection between curriculum so that it's supporting the AP work, and then there's a coister construction. So overall, we really closely monitor our AP enrollment because we want students to have these options. But again, as I hope we've demonstrated, all the different courses we're proposing, our goal is to meet the needs of all of our students. And so when we're looking at technology, we're looking at business, and we're looking at the humanities, we also want to offer more courses for students. We want to study art and music. It's come up in some of our discussions here. And make sure we have a better. And we make sure we have a balance between humanities and science and technology. And that's one of the goals that we're building toward. So we will be meeting with our teachers to talk about what are other courses that would be good for us to offer at Glenn, so that students who are pursuing something in the arts would feel that they could be competitive for the audition and college application process, if that's the field they want to go into. So that'll be something you should anticipate seeing further progress on it.
Just to add an editorial to this slide. I think it's noteworthy and something important for the board and community to understand that the variety and number of AP courses offered at such a small high school is extraordinary. I have had the benefit of working in both large and small districts, and the vast variety of courses that we offer is extraordinary. And the fact that the master schedule can be built in such a fashion that our students have the opportunity to avail themselves of multiple AP classes is really demonstrates the masterful scheduling that does take place by Mr. Cole and the team who worked to put it together. There's a big number of AP sections, and we look at the percentage of students who are taking advantage of these opportunities. It really is outstanding. And then when we begin to review the results of their efforts, it further demonstrates the excellence that's taken place to pass through. Some of you are aware that at one time I was employed in a pre-village school. And Melbourne is one of the larger high schools in our region and doesn't offer the variety of AP courses that John Lane High School offers right now. So while it's good to look at the numbers, it's also nice to have some perspective and comparison to our region, and it really is an extraordinary accomplishment.
And speaking of extraordinary accomplishments, I just want to ask Mrs. Brzezinski to share some statistics with you that she was asked to put together as part of the process that we go through. So Mrs. Brzezinski, could you just take us through?
Can I ask you one quick question on, or Mrs. Brzezinski answered also. But on the AP, go back to the slide. With the Capstone, to take the research, you had to have taken the seminar prior, correct?
So that's why we did not offer research last school year. But we had 42 in the seminar, and then from that 42, only two continued to the research stage.
And there are several reasons for that. One is the 42 students were in 10th grade. In 11th grade, because of the Regents, we made a decision that if you were going to take research in 11th grade, it would be an elective in addition to your own courses. And the students were polled, and 74% or 79% said they would take research, but they were going to wait until senior year, where it did count as their English course.
So it'll be a catch-up.
It'll be a catch-up. And that is something that, for example, I think we meet as a community on Long Island, a consortium. And our meeting is actually coming up the first week of February. And Mrs. Vaughn, Mrs. Halligan, we'll be going, and some of our high school administrators, to hear what's the experience everyone's having. This is a common experience. Now, a few schools have made a decision to put research in 11th grade in New English. But then you really have to look at the data about how that impacts students passing the Regents Exam or excelling, because it's not just about passing, it's also about this is an exam that every student takes, and it's part of having a competitive transcript. So also, there's certain things that we cover in 11th grade English from the Canon of Literature. And, you know, we have to make decisions about what we exclude to do the research. And having it in 12th grade aligns so nicely with the possibility that New York State offers school districts. If you look at course guides from high schools, there's such a variety of 12th grade English courses. So it really just fits well there. And thus far, we do have a commitment from about 20 students of that group that they definitely are signing up for research. And our pastors are meeting one-on-one with all of our students right now, and we're looking to see how many other students will make that cohort. And so that's why we have that.
But maybe go more than 20 students. And you have to have both components to get the AP Capstone recognition.
You have to have both components, and you have to have a score of three or four exams to four other AP exams in order to get the diploma.
You can receive a Capstone certificate with one of those, which is Capstone.
No, 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 no.
You need both. You just don't need the four additional AP questions.
So for the benefit of those who may listen later on on our website, in order to get this certificate, you need to complete both seminar and research. And then in order to get the diploma, you have to be successful in both of those, plus have a three or higher in four other AP exams.
But they have to get a three or higher to get a certificate for AP Seminar and Research.
Yeah, I would go ahead and look it up just to be positive.
But they can take AP Research even if they've gotten a two or a one.
And they still get the certificate, but they don't get the experience.
And we also devoted a page in the course guide just to the Capstone program, and we go through the different options. So whether you're just challenging yourself with just seminar, whether you want to take seminar research, whether you want to go for that Capstone program.
Then you're at no loss to take the five-year, to do it in 10th grade seminar and then come back 12th for research. There's no loss.
No.
I'll answer that. Always a little follow. Mr. Chesnoff has taught the 11th grade AP course also. And one thing that he actually noted last year when we first started to see this is that he feels that students that would take that AP Language course in 11th grade in that five-year actually will strengthen their writing skills, and it might better prepare them for the research course. So it actually may benefit them to have that extra opportunity to write a little bit more while also taking their English Regents in 11th grade.
So the decline that we see in AP English Literature, which is, what was that, the 10th grade?
The 12th.
Oh, 12th, okay. So that really makes sense.
So thank you to the team for... Thank you to the team for working again with me to ensure the provision of the high school is carried out through the course guide. I hope tonight's presentation demonstrated to you how we seek to provide diverse course offerings for all of our students, and certainly always pushing our students to reach the highest level, which includes AP course work, because we know that the research supports the fact that student exposure to the Ritter and AP course is a great predictor for their success in college and career. So whenever we can get a child to push that next level, we encourage them to do so. And offering something like pre-world AP in 9th grade is helping to build their capacity. At the end, we're looking at the endgame, and we're looking at our graduating class. And so this past month, I had to submit data to Washington Post to go out of list. We're one of the most challenging schools on Long Island. And they asked for a multitude of data points, one of which is their upper middle access number. And so they ask you, what is the percentage, or what is your total number of students who graduate? And of those students that are graduating, how many of them are taking AP courses in which they earn three or better, which I do know just sets them up for the opportunity to get potential college credit. And if you look here at the trend, it was, you know, we're doing the data crunching for just this year. And then, of course, we're like really excited. 190 students graduated in June of 2018. And of those 190 students, 117 of those students took an AP course, and perhaps even more than that, but 117 took a course and earned three or better on an AP exam. That's 62% of the graduating for class took a course at some point in their career, which is so impressive. And again, you could see over the past five years, you know, that just made me wonder and the team wonder. Mr. McNamara was really helpful in helping me to drill down further and get this data. And we look at over the course of five years, the increase among students that feel comfortable, feel supported. And of course, as Dr. Bosert mentioned, the fact that we're offering a plethora of AP courses, some are more accessible than others for students, I think we're really setting them up for an opportunity to engage in the most robust curriculum. And so this is pretty impressive data. And again, I thank the team for working with me to support this decision. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And finally, to close out, and thank you so much for your patience with the length of the presentation, but I greatly appreciate the dialogue. Just looking ahead, some things that we're thinking about and we're starting to do planning for, or maybe we're multi-tier planning for some of these things. So definitely, we want to continue to explore AP Calc PC. That requires sending a teacher for training here in advance, because we absolutely need to be ready from a curriculum perspective. And that's just saying, if you're going into your senior year, you can choose between Calc AB or Calc PC, depending on how far you want to challenge yourself in your intended major. Also adding the AP Computer Science A, and that would be the next course in sequence after the Computer Science Principles. We're also, as part of our work, wanting to add something from African-American history. This is something that students have talked to us about. Again, music and art enhancements. We want to try and think about what half your electives would fit for our students. And right now, for our languages, students can start Spanish and Italian in 8th grade, but they have to wait till 9th grade to start American Sign Language. So we want to, we are already engaging in dialogue with the middle school to explore the potential for us to start all three languages in 8th grade. So, and there may be other things that we come forward with next year, because there are a couple of other courses that are in very preliminary stages of discussion. And sometimes we get everything ready, we get it in the course guide, we don't have sufficient number of courses, so it might be something we come back to. But just some things that we're already excited about for the following year. Blody?
I have one question. Do we ever consider the strengths of the teachers of the faculty when we're deciding new courses? Or do we more consider the courses we want and then match the teachers best we can?
I would say both. We know that we have to have, particularly because of our size, we have to be able to have a teacher who can take on that work. And sometimes we might say everyone is already extended to a great degree. We know we're hiring, so maybe we're looking for that skill from somebody we're hiring. But we always start with our own faculty. We also need them to, you know, commit to the amount of preparation that goes into these courses from summer studies, some curriculum writing. So we definitely work to align with our faculty. And that's where all the discussions start, and start in a grade level unit. And then surveying other school districts, so that we build consensus around what's best for students. Thank you.
That was a thorough ed, great presentation. A lot of exciting things coming down the pike. So looking forward to the next agenda, Ms. Weiss. Please go over the wonderful donations that we're going to anticipate accepting later on.
So we have several donations from the Booster Club. We have a circuit make in Supplies Polyademy School, valued at $404 in coins cents. We have $800 for the purpose of funding a late fall 2018 Space Fox. The Maker Space, $400. And the Girls Club Program, $100 for James H. Floyd. We also have $4,000 from the Booster Club to support the purchase of books for the 4th grade libraries that James H. drew in intermedia schools. From the James H. Floyd PTA, we have $500 for the purpose of supporting steam events for last Thursday, which was wonderful. I attended that. And from the Ruda Anico family, we had $500 to fight off the negative student lunch account balances, which of course is a nice pay forward and helps us to be more physically responsible. It's a great plan. So thank you. Thank you to the Booster Clubs and Booster Clubs that they sponsor. I encourage parents and students to really look at what they have to offer. My kids have taken them, and they always, one was presentation. And then my little one thinks she's like, you know, a miscommunication guru. So it was really very fruitful and enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. We are up to the consent portion of our agenda this evening. I get a motion for...
Mr. Tamiya, if we just procedurally and then vote to accept the donation.
Oh, do not, no, sorry. I have a motion to accept donations of Ms. Weiss, which is, I have a motion of Ms. Marcus, second by Ms. Amelito, motions, comments, none, all in favor, 4-0. Now procedurally, I'll continue on to the consent agenda, correct? I have a motion for the consent agenda before you this evening. Motion of Ms. Amelito, second by Ms. Weiss, questions, comments, see none, all in favor, 4-0. You're up to our second residence remarks this evening. Any residents wishing to speak, step forward.
No.
Just past 10 o'clock, so we're good?
I have a quick question, if possible.
You have to come to the...
Dr. Hope?
Yes. Make sure you're safe.
My name is Nikki Crowley. I'm just curious, are there any current sophomores taking the research portion next year, as far as you know, and not taking AP Language? The 20 students that you talked about are seniors, will be seniors next year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think there was, a lot of the children that are recommended for research who are sophomores, but they're all aware, like most of them are aware, that they have the feeling they should be taking AP Language?
Yes, I think, well, we're still going through that process right now. And the students who want to take it in 11th grade will be taking an English class, and this would be an elective. So there might be some that want to do that, who decide to do that.
So I guess that's my confusion. That they should, that no one should skip AP Language in 11th grade because they're taking the Regents?
They can't. They have to take AP English, whether it's honors, AP Regents level. And if they're taking research, it's definitely an elective in 11th grade. We've talked about it, because we know one or two schools have done it. But right now, from the perspective of the Department of Administration, we're, we still see a class that's an elective in 11th grade.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the residents this evening? See none. I have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Weiss, second by Ms. Amelito. Sue no questions or comments, all in favor, 4-0.